And I just want to, you know, we had wonderful and very knowledgeable, appropriate levels of city staff representation at those meetings on both the streets, the side, and the police and fire departments and emergency crews, things like that. So we were able to discuss the issues, but nonetheless, we would all acknowledge that the near west side is very, it's a very, it's an at-risk neighborhood that requires vigilance. And I hope that the city will continue the level of oversight and participation that we've experienced in the past. And just to acknowledge that this decision is just a piece of the pie or the puzzle or the process. And thank you for the time and we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we have Mr. Bruce Meeks. You know the routine. Go ahead.
Yeah, Bruce Meeks, 1402 Wright Street, Bloomington, Illinois. I guess I want to start without some of your own words you've said since 2011, and my presence has been maybe not wanted or welcomed many a times. Accountability, these are direct quotes from you guys, oversight, getting it right and held responsible for actions. Come back in 2011, you got a draft proposal about changing the public comments. That wasn't done. The text amendment you're looking at tonight is not my idea, not my solution. It's yours. You set the rules and a majority of you sitting here have not abided by them. Whether it be public comment, letting the city manager call meetings to order during the automatic experiment that went nine months, it was supposed to go six months. You're not following your own rules. And I'm very disappointed. This is not the solution to open and transparency by kicking the can down the road, by not solving this. I've been very open. I've been very transparent and I've done in-depth research of your own comments. You're not, there's no one to hold you responsible. Unfortunately, unwillingly, I've had to do that. I am not happy to be the one doing this. But we've been left with no option. You have not sanctioned any of your members of the council for violating the Open Meetings Act willfully, with intent. You should look at the township and not Normal. Township has a beautiful public comment card. The moment when Deb Skilrudd came into being, into her job, she put out a new public comment card. I didn't see that from the four of you that got a mandate that we want an open and transparent government. You didn't walk in here with a plan of action, any thoughts of what you're going to do. It's been turned over to an intern. Where are the citizens in this input process for the last year? Sure, we have open houses with the mayor, but that's not the whole council and that's not the whole city. You have forgotten the boards and the commissions. You have another section of the code that is different than the one you're going to be looking at tonight. I asked that to be pulled last week and luckily it was, but I see no solution to boards and commissions where you actually will chastise somebody if they're, they can only talk, I think it's once a month or some verbiage of that standpoint. Your agendas say that the comment comes at the end of the meeting. Guess what? Your boards and commissions are not doing that. They're putting it at the top of the agenda. Oh, I realize this is considered procedural and all that, but it's not. It's violation of the city code that you're supposed to have taken an oath for to uphold. If you can't uphold doing the agenda right, then no wonder the citizens have a lack of confidence when you vote on other matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so that everyone understands, we don't, there is no practice of us responding to public comment. If we move right along, we're going to go to the committee of the whole minutes from January 21st and March 17, 2014. And is there a motion to, that the reading of the minutes of the committee of the whole be dispensed with and that the minutes be approved as printed? Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Move by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Black. Any discussion changes? And these we can do by voice vote, is that right? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show that the approval was unanimous. And we move on to item 4A, which is the public comment ordinance discussion. And so we can begin that process. Is city manager David Hales, would you like to chat about this or are we going to turn it over to Mr. Jergens?
Mayor, yeah, I'd like to have Jeff Jergens interim corporate counsel give a few introductory comments on this draft ordinance.
Good evening, council. This was before you a couple of weeks ago and I think there was a desire to have a little bit more discussion on it. This is part of addendum one to the committee of the whole agenda. And essentially what we're trying to do here is, in conversations with several, trying to make the public comment policy a little bit more liberal, a little bit more open within the city. So what this change would do, currently for city council meetings, we only have public comment at the first meeting of the month. This would open it up to every single city council meeting, so the two twice a month, as well as special city council meetings where there's an action item. So for example, my understanding is you do not have a lot of special city council meetings, but for example, we had one a couple of weeks ago where there was budget issues, tax issues on the agenda. So that would give citizens the right to speak during those meetings. We went ahead and even though it wasn't in the code, put public comment on that agenda just to make sure that you had public input at that time. But that would be one of the changes to the city code. Now typically you have maybe special city council meetings before a regular city council meeting for purposes of executive session. You would not necessarily have an additional public comment period for that. That would then turn over to the regular city council meeting. We keep it limited to 15 minutes because you do have a lot of other business to take care of at the council meetings. We also keep it limited to three minutes per speaker, but we have struck the requirement that we're only limited to five speakers. As I believe was the practice a couple of weeks ago, we were actually able to get through more than five speakers where, you know, somebody only speaks for a minute or two and allows additional time for more speakers. This does not track the other provisions for public comment in the boards and commission rules, which is a separate place in the city code. That, as was just pointed out, there are separate rules for that. Under those rules are a little bit more stringent. Public comment comes at the end of the meeting. There's a limitation on five speakers and there's a limitation on how often you can speak. I think if you speak once, then you have to wait a couple of months before you can speak again. We can certainly look at revising those procedures, but right now we've been focused on making sure that the public comment in front of the city council is the best it can be and what you want it to be. There are no hard and fast rules with how you set up your public comment, so we can do it however you would like. We have changed a little bit the process in terms of the selection process. To clarify, we've got a public card process where people sign up on a public comment card. Those are, if there's more than five people, we will have the clerk shuffle those and determine the order and determine the order that people speak so that we kind of keep that as an independent process, but we can set that process up any way you'd like. Sometimes people will use a process where it's first come, first served. They'll sign in and those will be the names that you choose, but we've kind of used a modified version of the card process in this ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Jergens. Comments? Alderman Black, Fazini, and Sterns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks Jeff for your insight. So you're looking for us as some direction as to how to come back with a revised ordinance this evening?
Yes.
So, okay. I will share my thoughts, one of which would be that I think we should have a public comment at every meeting that we have, kind of what you're talking about. I'm on board with that. I'd also like to see some sort of a lottery shuffle if we're going to have an issue where we have a lot of speakers that wish to speak, that those who don't speak as frequently get moved to the top of that lottery list. I don't know how we would rig that up in an ordinance, but that would be my preference. I think when someone takes time out of their day to come to one of these meetings, we should accommodate them as much as possible. The other one that I'd really like to see entered in here is that any email that is sent from a citizen or an entity to the city council at citybloom.org get entered into the record. Reason being, I think of that as analogous to addressing the council in one of these meetings, and I think that that should be shared with the public like any other type of public comment. And how we would rig that up gets challenging with spam or, you know, there's a lot of logistical challenges. So I guess my thought would be that we would let staff determine, you know, what would be added into the record from things that were sent to that email address, but council could also add or amend depending on what we see fit. So if someone wants to get crafty and put us in like the blind carbon copy to avoid the ordinance or send it to each individual alderman, you know, I'd like to get that entered into the record too, just in case. So that's my preference. Thank you.
Alderman Fazini.
I have the wording that sort of goes along with what Alderman Black just said. In the event that more than five persons seek to speak, persons who have not previously spoken in the past two months will be given priority before names being drawn to determine the speaking order. I'd like to hear new ideas rather than the same ideas from the same people each time, and I think that'll help do that. The alternative is we do what we're doing on the boards and commissions, which I actually like even better, and that is if you've spoken in the last two months, you wait two months to speak again. Also under 5C, the last sentence is, "A speaker cannot give his or her allotted minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time." I would add, "Or cede his or her time in its entirety." So we don't have people signing up to make sure they get their time and then they just give it to the next person who didn't happen to get chosen. It just clarifies what I think our intent was here. Thank you.
See, Alderman Sterns and then Milowmblay.
I'm really concerned about the legalities here, not so much the preferences that we may or may not have. But if I'm not mistaken, city, the, in the municipal code, state constitution is extremely kind of liberal and doesn't really define too much of anything. Can you help me with how well this aligns with what the state municipal code actually says?
Yeah, this actually comes from the Open Meetings Act, and this was a recent amendment in 2011, became effective in 2011. And it says, "As part of the Open Meetings Act, any person shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the public body." So you could ask, you know, several different people and get several different answers to that. I actually, and there's an opinion that's been issued, it's not a binding opinion, but a, an informal opinion that's been issued to the city saying that we needed to have public comment on all committee meetings. And I called the public access council's office, looking for that opinion and asking them if they had anything, you know, kind of explaining these rules, and the person said no. I later found that opinion, you know, which they did have, but I asked, you know, is there a requirement or has it been your interpretation that you have to have public comment on every single, at every single meeting? And I got the answer back, well, I think it's just that you have to have rules in place as to how to address the public body. I think most people interpret it kind of like you, you have interpreted Alderman Black, that it's the best practice to have it at every city council meeting. And I would say that's probably the majority of how people do it. But the rules here, especially the rules that we're talking about are much more, I would argue liberal than rules that I've seen in other places where you have to give three days advance notice that you're going to speak or two days advance notice or, you know, those kinds of things. So you're only requiring people to basically come and, you know, sign up. So I would say from the legality standpoint, these rules will meet those requirements. I have talked to the state's attorney's office about what we're proposing. They like the direction that we're going, so I have been in contact with them and I think that this will clearly meet the spirit of the statute.
Okay. And obviously, it would really be interesting to see some other rules from some other public bodies. I mean, we often get, you know, champagne decater, whatever. And that would really be interesting. I think I'm somewhat familiar with Normals having been at their meetings, and I think they are a lot more restrictive, at least they seem to be so far. But what really concerns me is when we get into sort of judging speakers and who's going to do that. And I'll give you one example, just as an example. We're already, some people are saying, well, let's let those people who haven't spoken be first. But to me, that's just taking one person and somehow giving them more value because they haven't spoken. Is there value in not speaking and rarely ever coming or is there value in these people, and we know who they are, who come often? To me, there's a tremendous amount of value in that. Frankly, I wouldn't make a value judgment period about someone who comes often or someone who doesn't come often. No, I didn't. No, I said, is there? No, I asked a question, and besides, I think Scott, if you'd let me finish, I appreciate it. No, I didn't, I didn't make a judgment. I just said, is there?
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on. We'll come back to this. I'll let you redirect afterward.
Well, it, no, I said, is, that, what I'm asking is a question. I'm not making any, I'm not, I'm not giving the answer. I'm just asking the question. And I'm saying that we avoid, you know, saying there's more value in speaking more often or not speaking more often by just simply, in my opinion, not doing that. And because I don't think, I can't say if there's more value, nor do I think anyone else should, you know, my opinion is, they just shouldn't be judged. They should all be allowed to speak. And I also think that, and I'll just say this because I don't know how much time we're limited, that when it gets into what is threatening behavior, I think we have to really ask the question, who is going to make that decision? Because I think that clearly threatening, you know, statements have been judged differently by different people. So it really concerns me that we're judging. I do think freedom of speech is an issue here. It comes in. And I've seen lawsuits where, for instance, a citizen wanted to come in and say that, for instance, city council is a quote unquote joke, and the city council didn't like that. I'm not using anything, just saying they didn't like it. They said, no, you can't say that. And the person won a freedom of speech, you know, suit. And I think we have, you know, lots of examples of things like that. I'd be curious to see what other cities are doing. And for my own feeling of fairness, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any judgments about anyone, nor would I make a judgment about their comment. I think it's clear certain things are against the law. Disorderly conduct is against the law. I think even threatening quote unquote can be against the law. But I really don't want to see a member of the public body judging that. I want to see, maybe, maybe we could have a public, you know, three or four people from the citizens judge it. I don't know. But I think we're on shaky ground when we start judging whether somebody speaks a lot, whether they don't, which is better. I don't know. I just think that, I don't want to make judgments about that. I want to let everyone have kind of their free, freedom of, you know, take the cards, whatever we do, draw them at random, however we do it. Frankly, I'd like to see 20 minutes, you know, just in case, but I'm okay with 15. I just don't want to be judging who's speaking and whether they should be or at what point. Thank you.
And I've got you down as a redirect after, if you have anything else to say. Any comments to that effect?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, you know, obviously we do not want to, you know, and I don't think this council is, at least from what I've seen at the meetings I've been, have a practice of engaging in content restrictions and those kinds of things. That's why we've tried to develop the system of the random drawing and, and you guys have been good about not, you know, cutting people off, you know, letting them go their three minutes, letting them say their piece, and that's really what public comment is all about. So no, we don't want to get into a content debate with anybody. As far as threatening or disorderly, the issues that I've seen that come up is, you know, not, you know, I would agree, coming up here and saying you're a joke or, you know, you guys are really doing a bad job, those kinds of things, unfortunately you have to sit and take that. But if somebody comes up here-
We have.
And you have, right. Unfortunately, if somebody comes up here though yelling and screaming and, you know, actually threatening you, then typically, you know, those types of situations are going to be very clear. You give them a warning, you say they're out of order, you know, you give them, you know, let them recompose themselves, but if they don't, then you call them out of order and tell them their time is up.
And I would assume that that's what the presiding officer should decide.
Typically, the chair does that right. But, but you're right, you do have to be wary of that and, you know, that's something that, you know, as the attorney sitting here in a situation like that, I would certainly help advise on those types of situations. But you're right on those points.
Okay. Alderman, Milowmblay, and then Sage and Black.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to speak about the shuffling of the cards. I know, yeah, I have a different take on speakers. I mean, I, as unpleasant as it might be sometimes, and actually sometimes it's not that unpleasant, it's interesting, I should say, as interesting as it might be. I, you know, I'm not inclined to limit people who have spoken, you know, the, you know, the previous time or within the last two months or whatever. I, I mean, I think we should just let them speak and then we go with that. As a matter of fact, I also think that if we have, I tend to prefer people who, to, maybe to give priority based on time, you know, if you show up, you know, first come, first served. And that's what we would, you know, I would prefer that we go with because the shuffling also presents a problem because some people make an arrangement to get here on time and then to see that they're going to be, will not have an opportunity to speak just because we shuffled randomly, to me, I think might not be as fair and as exciting to them. So the other thing that I wanted to mention, I seem to remember comments in the past about having to, people needing to talk about things that are on the agenda, maybe not here, but in, you know, with other cities. So I'm curious about that because I don't see that connection in this document. Maybe I missed it.
Do you want me to address that?
Yes, please.
In some communities, they do have provisions on that, that you've got to speak on an agenda item. There's nothing that we provided in here, so, you know, there might be an issue with the city about, you know, some street or some subdivision that some citizen wants to come and address all of the council on. So, you know, this allows that kind of open, openness that it doesn't have to be an agenda item. I would say you probably could make a rule like that and that would be your discretion if you wanted to do that. I've seen some communities try and make a rule that you can speak on anything other than an agenda item. To me, I think that is very suspect and doesn't make a lot of sense. Because most of the time you're going to get people here that want to give you their opinion on an agenda item and how to vote or not vote on something. But, but that again is kind of up to your discretion is how we craft these rules.
Right. And the county board, for example, you have to file for a Tuesday morning meeting, you have to do it by Thursday, is it Thursday? Yeah, the previous Thursday, and it has to have to deal with the amendment. But you can do it in the committees because there's a different structure there. So their business meeting is very tightly regulated, you know, in terms of access. I don't know that we want to follow that necessarily. Alderman, Sage, and then Black.
Yeah, Jeff, thanks first of all for the work into this. And I think probably the recommendations about every council meeting and, yeah, I'm in agreement with that. I think I'm probably agreeing with a couple of my other colleagues in terms of this restriction of people speaking based on whether they spoke the meeting before. And I guess I'll, maybe I'll ask a question maybe more rhetorical. I mean, as I sit here, my perception is, is we don't have a number of situations where people have come to speak and they didn't have the opportunity to speak within. So it sounds to me like maybe we're trying to solve a problem that may not exist. That's one thing. So that's why I wouldn't be in favor of that, of that shuffling or the limitations, I guess. I know one other thing that, one part of the conversation we had when we first adopted these was, and I know it rang pretty true for me, was I didn't want us to be perceived, again, perception versus reality, that, you know, someone could come down and say, well, you know, I went down to city hall to speak last night and they wouldn't let me. You know, the other half of the story being, well, there's provisions to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak and, you know, that type of thing. So I'd be concerned about, about the sense that somehow we're prohibiting people from speaking, you know, in a timely, timely manner. So the whole, this provision about limiting people from one meeting to the next, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
And just real quick, in reviewing this and in speaking with the city manager and the city clerk, it was clear, you don't have a lot of instances where there are more than five people wanting to speak. So it probably is going to be a rarity when you have that. I think the one meeting, you know, last month was one of those situations. And it might be that in those situations where you have a lot of people, you know, if you've got a really tight agenda, you try to keep to the 15 minutes, you could always, you know, suspend the rules in some cases. But you're right, a lot, most of the time you're not going to have, run into the five person problem or the 15 minute problem.
Alderman Black and then Lauer. And we are, FYI, we are a couple of minutes over in time, but-
Real, real fast. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think just by and large, there's a lot of ways to address us as a council and that in the time that I've been on here for one year, I think there's only been one time, which was the last, the budget meeting where we had one person that was over the line. And that's, and we've been very good about suspending the rules in those cases, somebody wants to address us. And I think, I'd like to see that codified a little bit better. So, because we as a council have a preference towards doing that, but I don't know if future councils are going to be that way, and I think we can be accommodating as much as possible. Thank you.
Alderman, Lauer.
I just wanted to reaffirm what Scott said. I think it's, to err on the side of openness is probably the best practice here. Allowing the citizen the time to speak. I'm willing to sit here until midnight if we've got something pertinent to discuss and I got no problem with that. And I think, I think we owe them that, especially when we're taxing them the way we are. So I want to try to keep in mind though that we are writing this into the city code and that, you know, future councils will be looking at this and trying to abide by it. So it's not just about what we're doing and what we currently experience, but what's going on into the future. Thanks.
Okay. So I think if I can summarize, I think we want to err as much as possible on the side of openness as we're going through this. I think we, if I'm not mistaken and hear any contrary voices, that we, we didn't maybe want to have preferences, but we might do random assignment if we have more than five and maybe suspend the rules if we have six or seven. Of course, that wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily put that in the code.
I think we can't do that, right?
Three minutes is the, is the minimum we need to-
Yeah, that's what I tried to do. In fact, and Mr. Jergens told me, we, I couldn't do that back a few meetings ago when it looked like we had more people than we could let speak. So, and it turned out in the end that not everybody took their three minutes and I think only one person was one person turned away.
I thought everybody got through, but maybe one person.
There was, we were one person short. Okay.
Got through maybe seven, I think.
I think so. That's correct. All righty. And again, there are many other opportunities for people to contact us in a variety of different ways and certainly whether it's a mayoral open house, even if, if, if somebody wants to bring something, even if the council members are not there, I'm very happy to contact the council members and then make the comments, you know, in the, in the city council meeting if we had a consensus or we had certain voices at a, at a mayoral open house where we can keep going. Anyway.
So is the consensus, you want to keep with the cards or you want to go with the list or?
I think we were, we wanted to go with the cards and, but not, not penalize anyone in terms of whether they've spoken before, if I'm not.
Right.
I think that's what we're doing. And, and again, if we get the unusual time where we might have six or seven, we could suspend the rules and just say, hey, let's give a little slack here. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor, just very briefly, Assistant City Manager just mentioned to me that being familiar with many other rules on public comment in other jurisdictions, she does see that the avoiding redundancy shows up a lot. And as also mentioned, we could always pull a couple of those public comments. This is certainly an area of the law where I think cities are continuing to evolve on the rules. So we'll try and find a few, just especially in central Illinois, to show the council what, what has been adopted in some of these others as we bring that back. So our intent then will be to revise this ordinance and to bring that, put that on a future city council regular meeting for final consideration and adoption as well as amendments. So just wanted to make sure is, you know, there's no objections to that. That's kind of the direction we're headed.
I think we got pretty clear directives there. Thank you. Moving right along to the West Jefferson Street Dead End Status Report on Traffic Engineering Analysis. And I, we turn this over to you and Mr. Karcher, is it?
Yeah, let me first speak for a few minutes. What we wanted to do is, as even was, was mentioned by Mr. Heisner, there has been a couple of public meetings over on the west side. Certainly Alderman Black, Alderman, Alderman Schmidt are very familiar with these meetings. At the request, especially of our police and fire department, staff has been looking at what other options may there be, including reopening West Jefferson. And some of these meetings have been to talk about, you know, why is, from a public safety concern and emergency access, is this coming up? Even though the closure of this street took place many, many years ago. Tonight is not necessarily designed to talk about the pros and cons of reopening, but more importantly, to see if the council feels that sufficient community outreach has been achieved. Because what we'd like to do is either go back, continue with some community outreach, or the other option is to go forth so that we look at either a public hearing or no public hearing, but ultimately for the council at a future date and time- or no public hearing, but ultimately, for the council at a future date and time to take a policy position on should West Jefferson be reopened. So, again, the emphasis here is, and I think especially for these two aldermen, they may want to start out some of the comments. We're just trying to make sure is, have we completed, to your satisfaction or others, enough community outreach? Or do we need to do a little more of that and maybe vary that a little before coming back to the council for a final recommendation of staff?
Okay. All right. Actually, so I think what we maybe we could do is start out with Alderman Schmidt and then Alderman Black, who represent these neighborhoods.
Sure. I've appreciated the fact that we have had these two public input sessions, and they've been fairly well attended. I think the second one was, I personally was disappointed by the number of people who showed up. What I've observed is a dichotomy between the people who live on the 700 block of West Jefferson, so that would be on the east side of this barricade, and other neighbors who live on the other side of the barricade. There is some very strong feelings that the city maybe has already decided what it wanted to do and that they, the city came to us asking for a solution for which they didn't particularly see that there was a problem. I certainly want to acknowledge that, you know, we've, I think Scott and I have heard that other people, you know, have heard what police and Public Works and Fire and others have said about access. But it does concern me that there are a number of residents who have walked away from these meetings feeling like they were not heard. And I don't, I'm not sure what to do with that. I think, you know, we've invited them to meetings. We have, I believe we've mailed things to everybody. I'm not sure I know what that solution is. And maybe it's worthwhile trying, an opportunity here when we make our decision to have another public input session. So, you know, I certainly wouldn't want everybody up here to think that it's a unanimous support for this because that would not be true.
Alderman Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Karen, for that. I think that that's well-founded. And while I'm speaking, Jim, is it possible to pull up like a Google map on here so that we can show the council and the public specifically where we're talking about? Maybe Scott would be able to weigh in. Sometimes I'm a visual person, and it helps see the map to see specifically where we're talking about and kind of the issues that we have here. Thank you. Because it is geographic. And this kind of came to my attention about, I would say, six or seven months ago now. It was at the chief's focus group. And a couple of citizens came to me and expressed their concern about this intersection and their thoughts as to why they needed it to be open. And so, I asked Jim for some feedback, and he had mentioned that the guys in the trucks were having some of the new equipment getting in and out of there. And then, of course, the chief weighed in saying that it was challenging for some of the police officers to get up and around that area to address some of the crime challenges. So, it was definitely worth looking into. And that conversation then turned into a public meeting, both of them, we had a First Christian Church. That was, I would say, at the first public meeting, we had about two-thirds kind of hesitant support. Do you think that's a fair one? Maybe a little bit closer to 50/50 between? We asked for a show of hands. It was very unscientific, but it was not overwhelming support for opening it up. But there's still, I think there was a consensus that at least looking into opening it up was something that the citizens wanted to do. Yeah, that's probably a fair approach. So, then we had a second meeting at the end of April, and we invited the neighbors around to kind of get some more feedback specifically about this project and some of the other issues in that neighborhood. And that meeting was, again, not as well-attended as we would have hoped, but I don't think we asked for a consensus and if there was, I don't think there was one at all. And I think that from the feedback that I've gotten, and I would say it's overwhelmingly in favor of opening up the street. I mean, I take all the phone calls that I get, and I think that there are two sides to this issue. But I think as a council, we should give staff some direction as to what it is we want to do. In terms of further public comment, I think two public meetings and some mailers are good. I'd like to see maybe a survey, kind of the similar practice that we use for zoning issues. And then maybe tied up with a, if you can't respond to this, we're having a third and final public meeting on this where we're going to ask for specific feedback. That would be, I guess, my choice. And I know that Vasu's been doing a lot of work with Mind Mixer and some others kind of social media. And one of the questions, one of the mayoral open houses I went to was that when we talk about water bill inserts, people who get their bill electronically, how do they get those, that feedback and provide their perspective? So, perhaps Mind Mixer is a way to go about it. But I think we should do a full frontal assault and try to figure out what we're talking about. So, Jim's pulling it up here.
Actually, Karen, did you want to make?
I just, I think the survey idea is really good. I think it would be helpful to ask a question about where people live.
Yeah, I would agree.
Because some of this affects like your front door as opposed to your neighborhood.
Yeah, it'd be nice to kind of map out some of the responses. You know, we could, we don't have to put somebody's address on, you know, public record, but kind of just a high level of what we're kind of seeing.
Do you live on the 700 block or other places?
Right. So, what we're talking about here, and just so the council can visualize it, Karen, you want to, yeah, perfect. Thanks, Google.
New millennial.
Right. So, some of the feedback that I've gotten is that when there are crime issues on either side of that street and the police are called, the suspects will run across the opposite side of the street and the police can't get to them in a timely manner. And then some of the feedback that I've also gotten is that, yeah, Friendship Park area is right over there. And again, on the converse side, I've had people tell me that they usually send two patrol officers. So, this isn't as big of an issue as some people are experiencing. So, I can see where people are coming from, especially the ones that are living around here. I've got a lot of calls from folks that live there, and this is one solution they came up with to help address some of the crime challenges as we move into the summertime.
Is it fair to say that if I'm understanding you correctly, and at least my impressions, maybe Karen and Scott both can weigh in on this, primarily the people who are against opening this up are those who live east of the current barricade?
Correct.
And other than that, it seems to be pretty?
I think that's a fair assessment, yeah.
Okay. That was my impression too, from, anecdotally. Yes, go ahead. Alderman Sage?
This is one of those that's really ward-specific, so I'm very much, you know, deferring. Maybe just kind of a clarifying question. When, because I'm trying to think back when the decision was made to close this. At least some part of it, maybe not primarily, but some part of it was enforcement-driven by? Right. And so, I guess we've had public hearing, have got Public Works. Do we have any feedback from the chief on how this might impact the ability to enforce or do some other things?
Alderman Schmidt said that he would like it open.
Not he personally.
But the?
Not he personally, but the police see that it makes their work of following and surveillance easier and makes the neighborhood safer.
And the fire chief as well, from an emergency, you know, response.
We have Chief Hefner coming forward so he can, as you're talking.
Yeah, my inclination is just to kind of, you know, get more deferred because it's such a ward-specific thing, a location-specific, that sounds like you guys have done everything right, you know, in terms of reaching out to the public and trying to engage citizens. So, appreciate your efforts.
Yes, chief?
Yeah, that would be correct as far as.
Alderman's?
It stemmed from some drive-by shootings that were occurring. So, it does affect us in how we respond tactically. You know, I mean, were it opened back up again, you know, we can come from any direction, more so with vehicles as opposed to what we're doing now. And as the fire chief had told me, it's very tight here, getting his equipment down here in their trucks. And often, they have to back up, I guess, the same as Public Works. But tactically, for us, it is challenging.
Okay. Alderman Sterns?
I'm just curious, what year was this closed?
Was it 94? I thought it was further than that. Jim?
We just have the mid-1990s is all I had down, written down. I think it was 94, 95 was what.
I remember well when it was open. Okay, 94. And what, so was the primary rationale for closing it, the safety? Was that the, that it would be easier somehow to patrol? Was that the primary rationale?
Not so much patrol, but once you drive down there, it's hard to get through. So, if you're doing the drive-by going west, you're pretty much stopped. I understand that there were actually even blockades up there initially. And then it was made to look like that. So, aesthetically, it looks nicer. But, you know, if you can't drive through, then it makes it harder to affect the drive-by. And also, it affected our responses.
So, was that an effective, at the time, was that like considered an effective means or strategy for the drive-by, you know, reducing the drive-bys? Was that?
As I understand it, yes.
It was?
Yes. The particular family that lived in the area.
Right, it was a specific address at that time.
At that address. It wasn't, fortunately, they weren't driving by just shooting everybody. There was a, for lack of a better word, a beef going on. And so, there was one particular residence that was getting shot at a lot.
And at the risk of saying a pun, I think that address has been addressed. So, it's no doubt. Sorry, I went for it.
So, what's the, what is the thinking in academic police circles about cul-de-sacs and about crime in general? I mean, obviously, they're used strategically in a lot of urban areas. What is, what does most of the literature say about cul-de-sacs and closing off in your, you know, your knowledge, your vast knowledge of?
Just depends on what's going on there. I mean, people like cul-de-sacs because of the privacy going down. I mean, it was, cul-de-sacs are usually designed, and correct me if I'm wrong, for equipment to come down and be able to turn around and go different ways. That evidently, you know, was not designed to be like that.
Because it's really not a cul-de-sac. It's just blocked street.
Exactly. So, when they go down, they have to stop and back up, same as we do. Or if we're pursuing from one direction, you know, we pretty much have to stop. I know they did initially.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Yes.
Mayor, if it's, you know, I think based on what we're hearing from the two aldermen who cover this area and that, I think we'd be happy to go back, you know, and to pursue, you know, a survey, one more attempt. And we'll try to be as specific as we can. I think the other thing we'll do too is make sure that we get information from the police chief and fire chief so that we're really putting together some of that kind of staff analysis that would help everyone to see that. And why it is that really police and fire are the ones who really brought this up to our attention and felt that for public safety reasons, they would like to see discussion go on and on this. So, we'll be happy to go one more attempt.
One more attempt. I think as Alderman and Lauer said a little while ago, we want to err on the side of transparency.
That's kind of the direction I was looking for tonight.
Okay. Did you want, have a last word?
Yes, that's the direction of one of the residents, Mr. Steele. He did make a very good point that it's almost approximately eight blocks to go around, to get all the way back around to get to that street.
I think that's a very good point. Great. Thank you very much. And so, we're going to move expeditiously to item 4C, fiscal year 2015 budget and the million-dollar appropriation for street resurfacing and staffed option for multiple locations on small-scale street repairs. Just so that, to clarify, the, we had budgeted $4 million in the previous year for street resurfacing. In this budget cycle, with the $10 million bond, we actually were down to zero. But then there was another $1 million put in with the four-cent-a-gallon gas tax for street resurfacing. The question is now, where do we put that $1 million? And so, I guess I'll turn it over to you first, Mr. Hales or to Mr. Karcher?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me first say that what we do want to do is move ahead and come back to the council ultimately with a specific way in which this $1 million that will be generated this fiscal year from the local motor fuel tax. Include that as part of our street resurfacing project this summer. So, we do have the liquidity, the cash on hand that we can kind of front-end this, knowing that the revenue will come in over the next, you know, 11 to 12 months. However, I do want to bring something out. From an engineering design standpoint, I think there's two opportunities. One, we could go back to the row contract and add a couple of streets that previously didn't get funded from all the work that the engineers have done. And Jim will speak to that in a minute. The other option, and I think, again, this is a personal preference of mine, we have a lot of smaller sections of streets throughout the city that especially have kind of erupted, you know, are bad. And one thought is, yes, we can always add just a street or two, but the biggest bang from the buck could be having the engineers, Jim and his crew, even if we have to do a little outsourcing, the more we can take care of some of these 30 to 50-foot sections throughout the city, near intersections, you know, before intersections, I think the greater impact and the appreciation the public would have, especially on some of these collector roads, arterial roads, et cetera, et cetera. So, those are two options. Before engineers move ahead, we wanted to see if the council wanted to weigh in and give us some feedback. Now, with that, Jim, why don't you go ahead and especially talk about some of the engineering work associated with those two options and the timeline to react to those, depending upon the direction of the council.
Thank you, City Manager Hales. Mayor and city council, city manager is correct. We really tried to, whenever we got this budget through, we saw two different potential opportunities that were feasible really for staff to move forward in a timely way. One, as you recall, originally, we looked at a very significantly larger amount of streets than what we ended up doing. So, one of the options, as the city manager pointed out, maybe option A, I'll call it, is take some of those streets that we had originally looked at in that original list. We were able to do some televising. We were able to already identify some of the areas and do those, maybe 10 to 15 smaller residential, smaller-volume streets. That's one possibility. Or the other possibility that could be done is something that we had done in the past two fiscal years, but this year, there wasn't the funding for it, a street and alley maintenance contract. You've seen that before, a couple hundred thousand dollars in the past few years. How staff, excuse me, how staff has utilized that in the past are those issues that do come up? Those issues that are more of those 30, 50-foot smaller sections to, you know, as complaints and concerns, and we're not able to address them because of a resource level. It gives staff that flexibility to go in. This would be more money than we have had in the past, but it gives staff some flexibility. The downside to that is we might have to bring on, at different times, different consulting services to be able to help us with that. This year, as you know, with the bond work and a lot of the other work we're doing, our staff is very much, our inspection staff is very much stressed. So, that would have to be part of that $1 million to be able to do that. Whereas, the other work, we already do have assessed, and it could be lopped on to what we're doing. So, what we would do for both is, one, let's say, option A, as I talked about, that would be more of a change order mechanism we would bring to you. Option B, we would go out and bid that work under a street and alley maintenance contract that you've seen in the past. So, we would then be bringing it to you at a later date. I think that now covers the two different options.
So, essentially, option A, I think you're both arguing, maybe give us a little bigger bang for the buck, there'd be more, perhaps more visible improvements throughout the city.
Under the street and alley maintenance contract, that is correct, Mayor. Yes.
I'm sorry. Alderman Lauer and then Sage, and we'll go this way. Lauer, Sage, Schmidt, and Fazini. Yes.
How much, Jim, of this can we do without the consultants? And how much can we actually do in-house? So, we're actually using some of the new equipment that you folks acquired just recently? And I would assume that we're much more flexible with our paid employees?
Our existing crews are doing a great job. As I've said before, they have the list. We've already given them, here's where you're going. So, they know. They have, they've already are dedicated there. If they can get that work done, that is amazing because we have given them a substantial amount of areas to hit. What we'd be talking about is areas beyond what they can hit during this current fiscal, during this current construction year and even into the very beginning of the next construction season, depending upon what we have left. So, very fair point. As council knows, we've continued to advocate for the correct equipment, the right resources for our own staff to continue that mill and fill operation. And that has, it will continue, and they've done a very good job of it.
Alderman Sage?
Permanent patching program has been one of the real significant accomplishments of Public Works. And I just can't say enough about that. So, a couple of questions and a comment. Do we have some level of certainty that where we would come in? And I would be more in favor of the multiple smaller, you know, repairs and maintenance around town. Do we have some level of certainty that we're not going to have some underlying infrastructure issues that'll come back to bite us in those areas? Because, again, what we've tried to get away from the last few years, right, is pave the street and then come back and tear it up. So, Craig can fix a water line or you can fix a, you know, that type of thing. So, that's, that would be one of my concerns once we go kind of open up the number of locations. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I think with the permanent patching equipment, when we first got that, there was... when we first got that, there, there was some employee suggestions, weren't there? There were some employees that, that actually spent time looking at ways to modify that equipment, brought that to management, and, and then management implemented those, or spent the money to get those done. And, and we've seen higher levels of output from that. I'm a little bit, you know, I don't fully recollect that. But for some reason, it kind of sticks in my mind, maybe just sure, a quick comment about that, because I'd be interested in hearing it again.
Alderman Sage, I'll start with that first part, because that, that was just the last thing you'd said. That was really, that Scott Brown is an employee in our Streets and Sewers Division. And, and Scott has taken ownership, you know, he has taken ownership of the grinding operation. To the point that whenever we looked at some of this new equipment, you know, we didn't just, we sent him out to look at it, what works, what doesn't. You know, so he said, yeah, this is what we're thinking, and we've gotten input, and we've rented the equipment, and what's working, what is not working. And so what you're recalling is, is we put in a monthly report a while back that he actually found some different ways to have tools to take off some of the grinding teeth, to make it more efficient, to be able to get in there to keep their operation going for long. And again, he's just one of those very good employees that we have that's just trying to make it, he's taking ownership, and that's what we as a city want. The, the second part that, that you were asking is, it really is a concern that we should be thinking about for underground. It's, it's important for us to say, whenever we have an issue that could potentially be a concern, it's good for you to know that. When we look at some of the streets around town and the issues, we'll do everything we can to keep up with, you know, the sewer. But you recall, we've told you before, we don't have all the sewer in this community raided televised yet. We started making movement in that direction, and my thanks to you for that support, but we are not there yet. So that it very much on these areas could be a realistic concern. That being said, we'll do what we can to allot our televising crews internal to look at those areas we can. But there's quite a few areas where you see a problem, it's because of something underneath the road. And that is just a unfortunate, our infrastructure is to that state, that we, so many times, we're pointing the fire extinguisher at the biggest fire and trying the best we can to keep up.
Alderwoman Schmidt.
I think my question, comment is very closely aligned to what Alderman Sage was talking about. I know that we have, we have to use emergency funds when we have failing sewer and water infrastructure. And then, obviously, then we have to repair the street. So if we go with the second plan, where we're looking at streets throughout the community that have needs, how much of this money might end up going towards emergency repairs? Or is that a separate budget line?
Alderman Schmidt, that's a great question. One of the, one of the things we looked at is, what would that realistically look like? If we had a list, you know, and, and my, my staff is really hesitant, because, you know, you don't want to, you know, well, we, we don't know for, you know, we want to be protective of that. If you release that, it becomes a big deal. But, you know, you, you look at that, and we were looking at about 10 to 15 different streets that you can try to identify and say, well, we've already done some sewer work. We've already looked at some of the sewers. And some of them we've identified, there's a couple dig locations that we would need to do as part of our utility maintenance contract. But again, these are areas that we have had some of that sewer looked at. So to kind of go back to Alderman Sage's point, this does kind of give some of that, address some of the concern, because we really are trying to do a much better job of doing that complete street rehabilitation, block by block, when we touch an area.
Thank you. Alderman Fazini, then Painter, then Milliwong Boy.
When Finance Committee recommended the $10 million bond, one of the advantages out of the seven or eight was, your staff couldn't do it all, and we knew that, and that we would have to outsource some of it, and that was a positive thing. It wasn't the managed competition where our people were gonna lose their jobs because we wanted to outsource. It was, we're gonna be at capacity, and we're gonna outsource and get the job done in a timely manner. And it wasn't outsourcing to the bad-word consultants. It was outsourcing to other people who did this kind of work from out of town, perhaps, or in town. But not, I don't think the word consultant's the right word. It's to another company that does the same kinds of things. Or maybe even has more expertise in curbs, or something of that sort. So that helps clarify it, I think. And, and we're not really talking about, how do we accommodate a $1 million addition? To me, it's how do we accommodate a $3 million deficit? We had a $10 million bond and $4 million to work with. And we eliminated the $4 million, so effectively now, instead of 14, we had 10. But now we're gonna go from 14 to 11. So we had the original plan for how we're gonna do 14. Now we're going down to 11. So it's what are we subtracting, not what are we adding, to me. And as far as our role as policymakers, I don't think it's our role to decide what you do. I think what you do is up to you. How we arrange the money so you can do what you do is up to us.
And let's see, Alderwoman Painter, excuse me, and then Milliwong Boy.
Would option B tie up major arteries for a longer period of time than option A?
Just so we're on the same page, because I think there was some confusion with option A. Do you mean that the street and alley maintenance contract, would that tie up more arterials? Or do you mean, okay. Yes, because some of the, where we do the specific blocks that have already been looked at, those are the smaller volume. The intention was for those, we had a lot of smaller-volume roads that we were looking at hitting. That, that again, you know, as you look at that list, you know, the, the overall volume of these roads are in the hundreds of ADT, you know. So that's where it's, again, just a much lower-volume street, as opposed to more the, the higher arterials. But those are the ones, as City Manager pointed out, that, you know, you can have 10, 15, 20,000 people on a day that, that a lot of folks really, it's, it, just from a staff perspective, let me tell you, it's, it's difficult for our employees to be able to keep up with the permanent pot, you know, the pothole hotline. It's a wonderful thing, it's a demanding thing. And so it takes a lot of effort, because they're, our streets are in a condition, our staff is, is trying to keep up. And it is, it is a demanding task keeping up with our infrastructure right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Milliwong Boy, and then Sterns.
Okay, I have two questions. First one is, how confident are we about the million dollars? Because I, I know that depends on its consumer behavior. So how are we confident that we're, we're going to get that?
We can never predict the future, but all our, our projections as to what we're, that we will get the million dollars, and that's based on the actual experience of other cities that implemented the local motor fuel tax. So typically too, we try to be, you know, a little on the conservative. So if anything, you know, hopefully, we'll even exceed that million a little bit. So, but we tried to be conservative, and we took the experience of other cities to come up with that projection from Finance on the million.
Okay, sounds good. Other question I have is, can you talk more specifically about timelines in terms of when you're gonna bring back some concrete action to the council? And when you're going to, when the work will start?
Good, good question. Unfortunately, it takes time. And, and I'd wish it, wish it was one of those things where we could snap our fingers and have the bids. We have to go through a bidding process, which now it is, the, you know, getting to where, shortly to the last council in May. Well, with the council's approval, let's, I'm getting a sense, let's say it was a street and alley maintenance contract, that you're familiar, let's say that's the direction the council went. We would have to go through the bidding process. We already have the bid documents put together from previous years. So we just, you know, work with Finance through the procurement office, get that kicked out as soon as possible. But even then, that still will take a 30, 45-day timeframe, and then additional, probably 15 days beyond that. You're looking in that two-to-three-month timeframe to get the, you know, to get people back on the ground, to get them working. And that's, that does get you, you know, pushing out into closer to that end of that construction season. So it can be difficult.
So that's why you'd like some clearer direction tonight?
Very helpful.
Sounds like you're getting it, but Alderwoman Sterns.
This, this might be off the subject, so forgive me, but the reclamate that we, is that the right?
CRF. There is, there's, there's a couple different types of pavement preservation, and that's not what we'd be looking at under street and alley maintenance.
And I, and I understand that, I'm just, I mean, I sort of assume that. Where did I get the term reclamate? Is that not correct at all?
No, reclamate is also used.
Reclamite, okay.
Just a very quick thing, for our pavement preservation that we've looked at, and we've really advocated as a, as a staff to the council is, our, our pavements are not in the condition we want them, so we have to stretch the life of what we have. Reclamite is a pavement preservation used on new streets, on streets that are just resurfaced. CRF was a treatment we've been using the past few years, slowly and small amounts, on older pavements, that stretches the life of older pavements typically that are failing. And so that's, that's the difference between the two.
Real quick on that, number one, are, are we finished with the CRF?
I sure hope so.
You and me both. You get them from each war, I get them from the whole city.
I appreciate the fact that you went out and, and dropped off door hangers, I think, to all of, in my instance, state, Elmwood, Monroe. I really appreciate the fact that you did that, and I will say, I haven't heard too much more. I'd like to be informed as well, if it's not over. One of the comments I did hear, and again, forgive me if I'm really off, I'm way off, maybe I am. Were potholes repaired before the CRF?
Yeah. Before that CRF is done, a lot of the potholes were done. It came to my attention that not all of them were taken care of. So that was brought up, that yes, there were some afterwards that were not addressed. But there was a list of where they were going with that CRF, and our staff tried to take care of every one that they could, because it was intelligent, before you do that treatment, before you do kind of a seal, to have that done. And, and just with the CRF, just, it's good to address it, we've addressed it with, before with the media and different groups. It was unfortunately just, it was not successful as it had been in the past. There were a few factors that went into that. Staff is still trying everything we can to think outside of the box. We really are, because we think that we can't continue to do what we've done in the past and expect different results. So we have to try to find new and innovative ways to stretch the life of our pavement. This was not successful this year, under anybody's criteria. We have to try to find ways to, to do it better in the future, and it will be. We'll, we'll find different ways to. So it is our hope to continue to try to, to find ways to, to help our pavements. And that's what we've continued to advocate for, and we will continue to do so.
Okay, all right. I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think you've got consensus on the bigger bang for the buck. And thank you very much, Mr. Karch. We're moving right along to the city facility needs discussion, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Hales.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I did want to give you just an update. We think we're getting very close to those final cost figures of two projects over in the Coliseum, which were emergency in nature. One was the smoke exhaust system repairs. That, as you know, you were involved in some decision-making back in December and January. For the smoke exhaust system, it appears that what we think is getting close to the final costs of that, just for materials and labor, is about $120,000. For the general exhaust repairs that were necessary as well, we're looking at about $111,000. Both of these, there was a critical need to move ahead quickly. You gave us authorization to pursue those two projects on an emergency basis. And furthermore, Finance is working on a, a budget amendment that we'll be bringing back to you to reflect these two projects and the cost of that to be included. Now again, just wanted to give you a quick update, but since we, we still may have a couple of costs, but those are just materials and labor only. The second thing, do want to bring to your attention two new emergency facility repair projects that are necessary. If you look in the packet of material in front of you, you have some pictures there. First off, the, the much more significant cost is, unfortunately, the police building chiller is reaching the end of its life. This particular chiller was identified by Faithful and Gould as being in fair condition, but also one that was reaching near the end of their lives. We thought we might be able to pick up another year or two. So again, we're dealing with something that we, it wasn't apparent that we would have to include in the fiscal year 2015 budget. However, it is critical, and hence an emergency, that we move very quickly with getting this chiller replaced. We have our, our emergency communication center over in that facility, many other very sensitive issues. And I've given the staff the go-ahead to begin planning for this particular project. I'm gonna have our interim facilities manager come forward and if, to talk about this, as well as the other second project. The other one that ties in with the police building too is the fire sprinkling system, which primarily, the, the problem we're having is down there in the parking garage. The, and, and I do want to say this, even though this, this particular system was looked at, what Faithful and Gould didn't have the opportunity to do is look inside these pipes. You have a picture of a corroded pipe. However, to get this picture, we actually had to saw into the pipe to really get a, you know, an idea what's going on inside. That wasn't part of the scope of work when Faithful and Gould put these two together. What I'd like, Derek, if you could, help me, as I, let's first take the chiller. I think our estimated cost, and again, we just arranged for the replacement, materials and labor for that project is, again, approximately, how much?
Between $100 and $125,000.
Okay. And then secondly, on the fire sprinkling system, we think that'll be a little less. What's the range on that particular project?
That's roughly $100,000. It's kind of two systems there.
Yeah, go ahead and speak to that, just, and again, what's the critical nature? Why is this kind of, you know, high priority, emergency, life safety, things of that nature, on one and the other?
So in your parking garage, you have a dry system. Essentially, there's no water in the pipe, it's all air. There's a compressor that keeps that air at a certain pressure range, so that water doesn't infiltrate that system. When the compressor went down two weeks ago, the system filled up with water, and leaks became apparent. There's water busting, you have pictures there, water shooting everywhere. So when they came in, cut the pipes open, we saw that large amount of rust in the pipes. So they are corroding. Unfortunately, it's the rust that's probably keeping the pipe together. So you can't really clean out the pipe, because you're gonna tear apart that rust, and you'll have a lot more leaks. We did replace the compressor, so there's air in the, in the pipes now. And there are no more leaks. But it is, it is a possibility that if there was a fire, that, that rust could potentially clog the sprinkler heads, and the heads would not operate as they're supposed to.
Okay.
Once again, by ordinance, you have authorized the city manager to proceed on emergency-type projects when timers are the essence. Neither project allows us the latitude of going out, putting together plans and specs, putting it out. But we are doing everything we can to get good, you know, reasonable prices. In fact, just to let you know, we are also exploring with the state of Illinois as to whether or not on one or the other, I think it's more the chiller, we can still be eligible for some state grant money for part of that replacement cost. We're exploring that. It's a time-sensitive, we're, we're doing everything we can to help make sure that we get, you know, not only a, a good value system, but if we can take advantage of some state grant money for part of the chiller, we're pursuing that. But again, this is going on a day-to-day basis at a very high priority level to help, because the, the biggest concern is on the chiller. You know, we're, we're just very concerned about, you know, if it goes a month or two. We're looking for some ways even to expedite that, but, you know, to have that down in the, as we're seeing the temperatures go up. We just, we're doing everything we can to expedite both projects. And these are unbudgeted, you know, projects in our capital improvement fund for the current year. But we see no choice other than to proceed as quickly as we can.
The chiller is in bad shape, it's, it's beyond repair.
Alderman Lauer?
Just wondering if there's efficiencies of operation with the new systems that you're looking at? And is there a range there in terms of what kind of equipment we're gonna be using?
So with the sprinkler system, it's just a pipe replacement, there's no mechanical-
I understand that, I'm talking about the chiller.
Chiller, the chiller, there's, there's not very much, we're gonna try and go with the train unit again, because we do have a cooperative networking agree, or purchasing agreement with them. So we're going with another high efficiency, with a high-efficiency model that I've worked through with the train representative that we did get pricing on. And I'm working on getting the cut sheets for that.
Okay. On the sprinkler system in specific, can you tell us, when is the last time? Are we on a regular testing program? Do we open those up on a, on a regular basis?
It is, it is supposed to be tested every year. I have to go back and look to see if that's, that was done prior to me arriving.
Okay, and just, just so that we understand, how old, when was that originally installed? It's been 20 years.
And that, so that's approximate life on galvanized exposed.
Right.
And it is thin wall, it's thin wall pipe, which is-
Can you give us a dimension at all, where, where that is, the thickness, et cetera?
So you have Schedule 40, which is about twice as thick as your thin wall pipe.
Okay.
So it is, it's not the fact that it's malfunctioning, it is, it's ran its life. And the same thing with the chiller.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the, the-
Thank you, Mr. Marion. Thank you for the expertise. I am in no way, shape, or form of facilities expert. You know, I can, I don't think I can change the oil in my car. But what I can say is that when we see like emergency things like this, there tends to be a approach of, let's get it fixed right away. And, you know, cost is obviously a factor. But if I were to have a preference, I'd like to see kind of a long-term solution to it, not just a patch. So if it costs us a few extra dollars to get a long-term solution, I don't want to be back here in a year or two having the same conversation because we went on the cheap now.
Correct.
So, I mean, if there's one thing I've learned in life, I would say the truest maxim is you get what you pay for. And if we go on the cheap, I don't want to be here again looking at more rust holding together our pipes. Thank you.
Any comment on that? Okay. City Manager, Hales.
Yeah. Let me just mention, because you brought up Alderman, Lauer, this facilities management. There's no doubt that over the past history, city of Bloomington has been like many, many cities. And that is, there has been minimal funding for facilities maintenance. And again, it's, it's not necessarily, I mean, across the nation, you know, time and time again, we're seeing that there just hasn't been enough money. However, what we are working on is to ultimately bring back to you a recommendation of what needs to be our future facilities management program. There hasn't been the kind of money spent in the past to do the kind of inspections, the maintenance, you know, et cetera, et cetera. In fact, you might recall from the Faithful and Gould report, the total deferred maintenance, both critical and recommended, was 33, a little over $33 million. That is a large price tag. But furthermore, life safety and currently critical amounted to about $8.4 million. Let me say that again. The category priority one, life safety code compliance, and priority two, currently critical, the total of those two categories is 8.4 million. We are in a situation where, again, we're trying to come back to you with some good solid recommendations going forward. How do we address those $8.4 million in critical and life safety issues? But furthermore, what needs to be the modern-day, you know, highly competent facilities management, irregardless whether it's in-house, contract, hybrid approach. But we will bring back to you both a operating and a capital recommendation as to what we need to do to go forward. The second thing is, we just all have to understand that with this amount of deferred maintenance facilities and that, we will beginning to see additional emergency needs of this nature. And again, sometimes it's going to be difficult, but it just so happens that gee, in the first month of the new fiscal year, here we are with these two that easily could be around $200,000. Now, we will also, on our end, from a financial management, be looking at how do we finance it? How do we, how do we adjust the budget, so on and so forth. But again, tonight is to let you know, these are two, you know, very solid emergencies. And we want to make sure, as you indicated, Alderman, Black, that we want to get good value. So we're looking at making replacements so that we get another 20, 25, 30 years, you know, good, solid life. And we take advantage of any and all energy cost savings features, you know, in these systems as well. So that is what I had on that item.
All right.
I'm ready to move on to one other facility.
Oh, oh, all right.
Okay. Thanks, Derek. Appreciate it. The, the other handout you have here is this Pepsi Ice Center parking garage. And I just want to bring to your attention, if you turn to the first page after the title page, repairs, according to Walker Consulting, were in the 1.2 to 1.6 million dollar range. We did talk about some other scenarios, repairs, demolition, some other alternatives. But the thing I want to bring to you tonight is I think there is good, solid justification to bring back to you a engineering contract to allow Walker Consulting to proceed with preparing the plans and specifications to make the necessary repairs on the Pepsi Ice Center garage. Why? First and foremost, we're entering the warm season where temperature, as you might recall, is critical to make these repairs. Secondly, in talking with Greg Meter, our attorney, by having detailed plans and specs, we see added value, because this also allows Mr. Meter, as he talks to the various defendants, you know, that are out there that have been notified, that they may have some liability, to also discuss these repairs with them. Some of those that have technical expertise, and like Greg told me even today on the phone, who knows if they have any other thoughts and ideas how we can, from a very cost-efficient, effective manner, make the repairs. We certainly, that could be part of some of those discussions. But, and then last, if we don't proceed with moving at least in the direction of getting the plans and specs ready, what we all want to avoid is to have the repairs not made, and that we go through another winter. Now, underlying the assumption in this is that the city would front-end the money to make the repairs. And we'll have further discussion of that. But it could very well be many, many months before Mr. Meter's back here kind of saying, what's the result of the mediation, you know, and arbitration? If I'm recommending that we not wait to see the finality of those and how much money we're going to receive in the way of settlement, you know, I think we have a good, strong case to get some reimbursement. But if we wait, that could be the end of summer, early part of fall. And by then, we've lost the opportunity to make the repairs this year. So again, from a, from a time situation, from being able to get the Pepsi Ice Center garage repaired, you saw some of the artist's renderings of how, I think aesthetically, I think it could look very good. But what I want to do is bring to your attention tonight, we are trying to get a price quote, and I may even be back here next week with a very specific recommendation to proceed with the engineering work so that we can be a little closer to putting the repairs out for bid, which I believe the council needs to consider moving ahead with such contract sooner rather than later, even if it means, you know, well, and that's to ensure that the repairs can be made before fall, and the temperatures go cold and onus and it puts us out of the-
So you're asking for our action. Obviously, we needed to have more time budgeted for this, so I'm not going to hold us to the time. So I'm going to start with Alderman.
So that's kind of, yeah, just what I wanted to-
You're looking for our feedback on that. Alderman, Lauer.
One of the things that comes to mind here, David, is life expectancy of the facility long-term, and how, what we're deciding is actually going to affect that. Are we limiting ourselves long-term? We've got a pretty sizable investment in that facility, and I'd hate to see us retard the life limits of the facility with, you know, making the wrong decision.
Any comments on that, Mr. Hales?
We can certainly have Walker come back and share that with us, because I think that's a very valid point. You know, either before, or if we don't make the repairs, or even if we do, what's going to be the impact on life expectancy? And we can come back with that information in the future.
Alderman, Sage.
I guess I probably would be in favor of going forward, David, as you're suggesting. Because what you're suggesting is we're going to kind of run these two things, the litigation and the construction.
Exactly, parallel tracks.
Yeah. And, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, we have some contractual obligations with people who own the, the skyboxes, right, in the Coliseum to provide. And certainly, we want to preserve those, you know, those relationships as much as possible, right?
Exactly.
Plus, we have some additional cost with the, with the auxiliary parking as well, right? So, so I mean, there's, there's also some, maybe not quite so clear cost associated with it if we continue to wait. So I'm in favor of going forward.
And just remember, too, that temporary parking lot is great during the summer when it's dry. It's terrible almost. You can't use it during the winter time. So thank you.
Just let me see, is it, we haven't, is there anyone who doesn't want us to proceed with this? Well, I think you have your-
Thank you.
Your directions. And then-
All right.
Let's go ahead and move ahead to item 4E, the 2015 City Manager Action Plan. And we've got 10 minutes budgeted for that.
Mayor, I'll make this brief. I do want to bring this draft and have the council adopt it in a regular meeting. Did want to point out a few changes. One, I have removed revitalizing our city organization, given the fact that during the difficult budget decisions that had to be made, we had to withdraw all the financial resources for that particular item. Second, stormwater has been moved in the sanitary sewer. Third, we have tried to give it and make it very clear that two projects that will be multi-year is street master plan and water master plan. We do hope to achieve maybe 50% completion on those two in the current fiscal year, but we don't see that we would get to 100%. However, you know, hopefully, we can provide some of that information. I think the last thing I just want to point out, that I think it would be very beneficial for the council, for the public and staff, that when we bring to you these draft five-year capital improvement programs that include sanitary sewer, sidewalk, facilities, and et cetera, we focus on existing fee rates. And that is that, as you look at the five-year funding plan we'll bring back, we want to look at what would the current sanitary sewer fees, sewer, stormwater fees and water fees, what are we projecting that revenue to be over the next five years? Consequently, we would then show, based on that revenue, what could we do within those revenue parameters in the way of projects that are coming from those master plans? And what would be so-called unfunded projects, just because we don't have projected revenue that would be sufficient? I believe that that is a, a much more beneficial way to address this first, because that also will allow us, and we'll come back to you, with, with much more public outreach. I think this is going to be a turning point, because traditionally in the past, there hasn't been a lot of citizen outreach on what we were thinking of as far as future capital improvements. We didn't have master plans. We didn't have prioritized projects. We didn't have good cost analysis, or even cost-effective analysis. We're trying to do more of that in this. And frankly, I think once we even bring to you that draft five-year capital improvement program, we should really broaden and look at ways to engage the community so that they can see what would existing revenues help cover, but what will they not cover in the way of addressing much of this deferred capital maintenance and deferred capital projects. So I just wanted to emphasize, hence some of that sharing, that when you see this, this will be kind of a realistic, here's what we can afford based on revenue projections, but here will be the unfunded projects, and as best we can, also what the priorities will be. That, to me, is, I think, a great, a better starting point to bring to you, and I see that happening later this fall. So just wanted to show you the modifications, and if there was any feedback, we're willing to receive that.
Start with Alderman, Black.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm on board with the modifications that you've made. But I made a comment about this last time about the status column. I, I wonder, in progress could mean a lot of things. It could be 5%, it could be 10%, it could be 90%. If we can translate that to more percentage, yes, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
Other comments, questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, we move right along. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman Fazini, seconded by somebody on this side, Alderman, Lauer. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, can stay. Thank you.